So with that, I'm gonna start with the pledge of allegiance. Sorry, everybody, for joining so late. There were some technical difficulties. But here we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just gonna head up. Just bear with me here. Hey, welcome again, everyone. Can you hear me okay? Okay. Welcome to the June 18th, regularly scheduled but last school committee meeting scheduled for this fiscal year. This is a virtual meeting. Everything's done by roll call, so I'll do the roll to see who's here. Ms. Rossi?
Yeah.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Bakayaki?
Yes.
Myself, yes. And Ms. Spear let me know earlier today that she would not be able to make it. She has a work conflict. We're gonna miss her. So we're moving on to public participation now. Steve, I had sent you an email earlier asking if anyone had expressed interest in being part of public participation. Did you hear anything?
He said no, he had not heard anything.
Okay, so there's been no interest in public participation for this meeting. Moving on to good news. Anyone have any good news? Ms. Morgan?
It's the end of the school year. And we made it.
Yes, yes. Anyone else? Ms. Bakayaki?
I just wanted to mention that we had town meeting earlier this week. Definitely a different experience. For those of us that were there, I know it was just more intimate. It was definitely different. But I did want to mention that. I really appreciate that the town administrator, I appreciate the introduction that he wrote. He really went step by step in the process that he had to take in order to, you know, make the adjustments that he had to make. And I really appreciate that. So if, you know, for anyone that didn't go to town meeting that's interested, it's really a great explanation, and I really appreciated that he did that.
It was a tough one for everybody. Anyone else with good news? I'll add, I think it was yesterday, I happened to see this stammer pop up on Facebook, and I'm like, what's this? She's doing, she did some kind of a live bingo. And I watched that for a little bit. That was kind of interesting. She did a really good job with that. And the people that did pop in seemed to enjoy it. So seeing no more good news? Moving on to the minutes of the meeting, June 11th, 2020. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
So that was moved by Ms. Rossi and seconded by Ms. Bakayaki. Any discussions or comments? I have a couple, just on page four. Let's see, page four. Where it says, it says vote, right after it says vote 230, motion did not pass. And then it goes on, it says, Ms. Rossi moved to use all of the CARE Act funds, $507,000, seconded by Ms. Morgan. Before that, I'd like to insert something to the effect of Mr. Flaherty proposed using all of the CARE Act funds. I didn't make, I technically didn't make the motion. I can't make the motion, but I piped up on that discussion. Anyone object to that? Shake your heads, nod your heads, anything?
No, I don't object.
Okay. So there's one, and I have-
No objection.
Huh? What's that? I think Ms. Rossi said she had no objection. And then, so Ms. Rossi, I mean, Ms. Ruiz, if they could just read, Mr. Flaherty proposed using all of the CARE Act funds. And then everything else is fine. And then and then you go a little further down. And it describes the discussion we had, and Dr. Shaverhood had described how we had to be careful because if we use that for staffing, then we have to pay the 10% on retirement and MTRS and such. Which is true. But I wanted to see, I wanted to be clear in there that the discussion also included how there had to be some sort of creative, you know, maneuvering to do it, but nonetheless, ultimately, dollar for dollar, those funds would be used for rehiring staff. But I don't know how to word that. Let's see, how about how about Dr. Shaverhood described how the money shouldn't directly be used for staff, but from some creative transfers. The committee was assured that the money would be used towards staffing, toward rehiring staff on a dollar for dollar basis? Are you okay with that, Dr. Shaverhood?
Yes, what we've done is we've looked at all the supply lines, tech, technology lines, and we've had to empty all of those out.
Right, I'm just referring to the last meeting. Are you okay with my characterization of the minutes?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we had to do. That was our creativeness.
Yeah. Ms. Ruiz, do you think you got all that, or will get all that?
Yes.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve as amended?
Could you just tell me where you want it inserted, is where she was talking in that paragraph?
So I would say, I would say just above the line where it says, Mrs. Rossi moved to reconsider the vote on the CARE Act funds, seconded by Ms. Morgan. Are you good with that? So can I have a motion to amend, to accept this, a motion to amend as I mentioned?
So moved.
So I hear Ms. Morgan made the motion. Is there a second? All right, Ms. Rossi seconds. So a vote on the amendments? All those in favor? Actually, Ms. Rossi?
Yeah.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Bakayaki?
No, and I've tried to tell you this before, but I couldn't interrupt you. I'm just gonna vote no, because I don't really like the word creative when you're describing the budget. So I understand what you're trying to say, and you're right, and I totally agree with what you're trying to say. I just don't agree with that word creative. That's all.
Okay, so I'm gonna vote yes, and I totally respect that, what you're saying, Ms. Bakayaki. So that passes 310. Did you have a better word, Ms. Bakayaki, for that?
No, no, I don't.
Okay.
And like I said, like I said, I understand what you're trying to accomplish, so.
Okay. All right. So that's now been amended. Now we're gonna vote on the actual minutes as a whole. So do I have a motion to approve the minutes as a whole?
So moved.
That's Ms. Rossi.
Seconded.
And Ms. Morgan? Any further discussion? Seeing none. Motion to, sorry, roll call to approve. Ms. Rossi?
Yeah.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Bakayaki?
I'm gonna say no, just because I didn't agree with the amendment.
Understood. And myself, yes. Passes 310. So that's the minutes. So moving on to the report of the student representative, Mr. Burge. I saw you, you finally made it. Make sure you unmute, and hopefully you have audio.
Can you hear me?
I can, very well.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
So as we all know, the 2019-2020 school year has come to an end. Although it ended in a way we would never consider a possibility back in September, Wareham pulled through, just as we always do. Throughout this unique situation, myself and my classmates were shown just how resourceful and dedicated the teachers and staff of Wareham are. Each and every one of us will be forever thankful. We all managed to gather together and celebrate the seniors in creative ways, given the circumstances. I'm sure you all have seen the signs in the town hall and the incredibly spirited senior parade that we had. It's quite possible that we will have to continue adapting to the boundaries that COVID-19 has created, but I truly believe that Wareham will make the most of it. I myself will be a senior next year, and I look forward to experiencing my last year of high school as a part of the Wareham community. I want to thank each and every teacher and staff member that has worked incredibly hard during these tough times. Your effort does not go unnoticed. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much, as always. Anyone have any questions or comments or anything from Mr. Burge? So will you be continuing with us next year?
Hopefully, you guys will have me.
Oh, no, I got no audio. I didn't hear you.
I said, hopefully, if you guys will have me.
Oh, yes, yes, okay. I think it's Mr. Taladino's choice, and hopefully, hopefully, we'll see you next year. Anyone else? Ms. Burge? Okay, seeing none, thank you. Acceptance of gift. Dr. Shaverhood?
Yes, we have another gift that I would like you to approve besides the $675.32 from Stop &amp; Shop. That's to Deacon School. We also have $581 from Minute Forest Elementary. So I would ask that you please approve both. They both came from Stop &amp; Shop A+ Rewards.
Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
So I see Ms. Bakayaki, and did someone second?
Second.
Ms. Rossi seconds. Any further discussion on the gifts? Seeing none. Roll call, Ms. Bakayaki?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Rossi? Myself, yes. Passes unanimously for 00. Thank you very much. Again, always my favorite part of the agenda. Report of the superintendent.
Yes, first off, I would ask that you please approve the bill and payroll warrants as you have listed in the newsletter.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Now that was Ms. Rossi. The second, that's Ms. Bakayaki. Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Roll call vote, Ms. Bakayaki?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Rossi?
Yeah.
Yeah, myself, yes. And before we continue, Dr. Shaverhood, I'm sorry, but I think I just saw a message from Dr. Schwam, Joyce. Did you have something you wanted to say to Emily?
Oh, I just wanted to thank her for joining us all this year, and I just want to make sure she knows that her input is very much appreciated.
Yes, it is. I'm sorry, go ahead, Dr. Shaverhood.
Oh, that's okay. So, did you pass the bill warrants and payroll?
We did.
Okay. The next would be just an update on summer programming and returning the fall. We do not have any idea about how we're returning. We're expecting something from the commissioner any day now that will outline the tentative plans. What we have been given, though, is PPE materials that we will need to have on hand, so we've been looking at how we're going to purchase those and getting that ready. We also have been meeting as groups. We have several committees going district-wide and school-wide, school-specific, meeting with teachers, paraprofessionals, custodians, et cetera, talking about returning to school and what's, what advice and what is important and how they think it should work. So that's something that we've been working on ongoing. We've also had some surveys going out to parents about our programs as we ended the school year, but also any advice that they would have for us. And it's really kind of split. There's some people that would like to see us back at school 100% face-to-face, and there's others that are pretty hesitant about that happening. And so until we really hear from the commissioner, it's very difficult to put specific plans in place. So once that happens, that's when we will really gear up and start outlining our return. However, for the summer, you know, we've started looking at programming, and our ESY program will be remote. We will have some care, and that will also be remote. We've been invited to participate with, like Buzzards Bay Coalition and a few other places, organizations like that. And that would be on a small group. However, parents are responsible for transporting their students to and from wherever it might be located, and it would be for a very short time with a very small group. So that's really kind of where we're at right now. If you have any questions, you know, I'm certainly happy to answer them. But we do expect more information coming shortly from the commissioner.
So interestingly, you probably get the same information, but we had a bit of discussion on this at the Keep Guard Collaborative meeting with Paul Hilton on the PPE. And he was saying that the guidelines or what the expectation is, is basically a third of a gallon of sanitizer per classroom per week?
Yes.
That's a lot of hand sanitizer. And the buses too, you know, and trying to actually, you know, protect the bus drivers, you know, you can't enclose them in plexiglass on a bus, you know? Yeah, lots going on. Anyone have anything for Dr. Shaverhood on this? Oh, bunch, okay. Ms. Bakayaki?
I just have a question. Do you, as the superintendent, have the opportunity to give your input on these decisions that are being made at the state level?
From the commissioner? From the-
Yeah, do they ask? Yes.
They allow us to have some input, very little.
Ms. Rossi, go ahead.
I have two questions. The first question is, you said that surveys went out to families. How many went out and how many responded?
They went out from every school about how we did and however many responded. It varied from each school.
Like a large percentage, a majority responded, or were they like a few, like, you know, like 25%, 50%? Like, I'm just trying to get an idea of how many people actually, like, saw and responded to the- I know I filled it out for my son, but I just didn't know how engaged, you know, going out by email, how engaged the parents were in filling it out.
I would tell you, at the high school, certainly, from what I can recall, there were more eighth grade parents than it went ninth grade, 10th grade, and there were not as many as when they hit 12th grade that responded. In the elementary, I believe there was, there was a larger percentage, of course, that responded. I don't have it off the top of my head.
Okay, thank you. So my second question is, if this is coming down regarding the PPE and the sanitizing protocols from the state level, knowing that almost every district in the state has had budget restrictions because of everything going on with the COVID crisis, is there any rumblings or possibilities of grants coming from state aid additionally to the CARE Act coming for the purposes of PPE and sanitizing going forward for the fall? Have you heard anything to that effect, or is every district gonna be on their own? I mean, it seems kind of fruitless for the state to require something after every town has had to so drastically cut their budget that it just, it seems like they, I would hope that the commissioner has a plan in place to help districts that have had to, you know, financially take it, you know, greater for some than others. But I would hope that, I didn't know if there was any, like, rumblings about anything like that.
That was one reason why we received the COVID-19 monies. That was to be used for PPEs. And I do not believe that there's any more money coming that we've heard about. And that money was supposed to be used to help purchase PPE.
Thank you.
Anyway, Ms. Morgan?
So one of my questions about is ESY, because I know that Russell Johnson has recommended that districts actually try to take a small percentage in person, and many districts are doing that. So I understand all the complications, but I'm just wondering, because I think you also said that the CARE program is gonna do that, right?
No, the CARE program is going to have, like Buzzards Bay Coalition, they are going to house a few students for kayaking and sailing purposes. We are not going to be housing any in our buildings.
Okay. All right, and then the second question is if, can't we revisit with the COVID-19, you know, the PPEs, if we need to take some of that money? Can we look at using it? I mean, it's gonna be a necessity if we're moving forward in need.
Well, go ahead, Dr. Schwam.
I mean, I think the committee, you guys just voted it to go somewhere else. We-
Actually, I voted against.
But the vote on the committee, why not put it in that place, and so we're doing-
Yeah. So my understanding is, we voted on, and I'm gonna go back to my conversation that I had before, we voted on a number. Does that mean that we have to stick to, you know, everything that we were proposing that the money would be used for?
I'm gonna jump in and say, yeah, anything can be revisited, but I mean, that money was specifically to rehire staff, so if you want to reshift it back to PPE, I mean, I think that money was supposed to be, it was eligible for numerous things, staff, PPE, et cetera, right?
Yes, it was specific for the issue with COVID-19, and that happened to create a lot of problems overall, right?
Right, right.
Ripple effect, so every area was attacked as a result, and so, you know, you're right, it could be used for any number of things.
Right, and so if you'd like to revisit it, you know, later on, and say, you want to take, I don't know, 100,000 for PPE, then, as I always say, it's like, you know, the currency we use here isn't dollars. The currency we use here is teachers. So do the math on how many teachers that is and figure out how many we need to lose.
Yeah, but the problem is that we have, you vote, we bring them back, then you decide you want to put it somewhere else, and we take them out, and put them back and take them out.
Obviously, yeah, obviously, that's unworkable, yeah.
Well, I think, I don't know if it means a special meeting or what, but I think we need to come to a decision this summer about what we're gonna do. I mean, plus, hopefully, we'll have more guidance. What did you say, Dr. Shaverhood, tomorrow, right?
Yeah, we think that it could come tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
The problem is, everything out of this budget is gone. And for us to buy PPE equipment at this time, we are taking all supply lines. Nobody is going to have supplies, the material.
Right.
So our message has been to principals, don't even bother to ask people what they want because there's no money. That's going to have to be used for PPE. When we look at the PPE stuff that we want, it goes from face shields to masks to gowns. I mean, it just doesn't stop. And that's on top of all cleaning supplies, which, quite honestly, we've had to pretty well take out of the budget to make, to equal the $500,000, so we don't have to get hit with the 9%. So we have no place to go.
And to Andrea's point, it's like, you know, we set the budget, and it's like, it's kind of like micromanaging to say, to later on be like, oh, let's do this with it now. I mean, unless there's a dire need, I mean, we'd have to probably look at multiple, multiple items, not just-
Right. Right, and I mean, this is a very unusual case, so I think it's important that we do, you know, take into consideration of that.
So if, when we look at recalling people, that uses about all of the additional $200,000. And so we've started making those recalls, and per the committee's direction. And once again, you know, it certainly has tied our hands with the budget.
Ms. Bakayaki?
So what you're really saying is that if we decided in a month that we should have kept 100,000 aside for supplies instead of payroll, we don't have that option because you've already called those people back. And your only option that if we decided that at that time would be to let those people go again. Yeah, right. I thought so, I just want to be clear.
Ms. Morgan?
So I am a little surprised because it was just last week that we voted on that. So you've already started to recall people?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say anytime after the town meeting vote would be prudent to start doing that.
Well, that was just Monday. So when did you start?
Yesterday.
Okay.
Anyone else on this? Oh, go ahead, Ms. Rossi.
So we don't know 100% if, like, I mean, they could decide, if they could decide that school is going to remain remote for at least maybe the first two semesters, and that might be a moot point, correct? That you wouldn't need PPE if there's no one, no students in the building. So I mean, everything is so fluid with everything regarding COVID, with how often things are changing and how often, you know, as the guidelines change and the numbers change. I mean, there could be, I mean, with things reopening, they could decide that, you know, numbers are not where they want to be, and we might not be able to open anyways. That's a possibility. And that's a possibility as well, correct?
Sure, I mean, that certainly is a possibility. I would say we probably will be looking more at a hybrid, returning with a hybrid for a bit. But also, we have to keep in mind that we have to be ready either to go completely back out or if things turn around, we'll be bringing everybody back in. So, like you said, it's anyone's guess at this time.
It's, it's so, it's such a moving target. I mean, so we're talking about potentially getting more money tomorrow, and Derek is talking about, we're probably, you know, looking at, because he was, he was trying to be conservative with a 10% decrease. It could end up being 15% decrease, and who, who knows what's gonna happen then? It's, it's, and we won't even know that till October, you know, so, so what a mess.
Yeah, I, I don't think we're getting any more money, but if we do, that would be fabulous.
Uh, Dr. Schwam?
Oh, the state deficit is in the billions now, right? Overall, so, I mean, it's just, um, it's a big, big problem overall. And, and we're all just trying to figure out how to get by with what we've dealt with. But if you're talking about billions of dollars of debt in Massachusetts, then you multiply that by all of the states, there's no money.
Yeah, well, there's plenty at Upa Cape. It's 3.7% at Upa Cape. So anyway. Um, any, anyone else on that? Uh, seeing, seeing none, um, still you, still you, Dr. Shaverhood.
Okay. And then, um, I'm asking the committee to make a, a budget transfer vote. We would be transferring from sped tuition's, uh, $85,572.89, and we would be looking at moving it to school committee contract services in the same amount.
Um, so I'll entertain a motion to, a motion to approve.
So moved.
That would be Ms. Bakayaki.
Second.
Yeah, second, Ms. Rossi, okay, discussion? Uh, Ms. Rossi, go ahead.
I just had a question for, it says to, to cover sped attorney expenses, and I just didn't know what, what do we have those incurred from? Like, I just, I'm trying to understand that aspect of things, because that's something I'm not necessarily familiar with.
Uh, Melissa's face here, I could ask.
I'm here, do you want me to talk?
Sure.
Hi, Melissa.
Hi.
Welcome.
So I'm happy to discuss this, and it's, it's something that probably will take longer than the time that we have, but to kind of synopsis it for you, like in a nice little package. We have several cases that were in settlement prior to me getting here that have now come out of settlement, and we've had to now engage our attorneys again with to either resettle or go to hearing on. Um, and then we also just have a lot of situations going on right now with students who, um, whose parents, um, file for hearing. And when a parent files for hearing, our immediate response has to be to get our attorneys involved. We cannot, um, go into a hearing without an attorney, so that would just be foolish on our part. So we need to make sure that when we are filed upon at the Bureau of Special Education Appeals, that we answer back with having our legal services there to support us through that process, because clearly we're not attorneys. So that's kind of where we're at right now. I, I'm, I think we have a meeting set up with the school committee to go over some more details of that, and I'm happy to discuss that. But that's kind of the, the overall synopsis of what's going on.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah. Um, and so Ms. Ms. Morgan and I actually had some questions too, and I think we're gonna meet up on Monday. Yeah. Um, so, so it was a good question, obviously. Anything else, Ms. Rossi?
No, that's all.
Um, anyone else? Uh, I, I have, I just have a question, Dr. Shaverhood. Uh, so this is the end of, well, we're approaching the end of the year in a couple of weeks. And, and I was hoping to square away all the budget transfers, you know, whatever needs to be squared away with the, um, the, the, the choice accounts or what have you. And, and I, I, I thought I'd see more than this. Do, do we have more that will be coming?
Yes, we could have. Uh, we're waiting on the town accountant, uh, who's been on vacation.
So that, I mean, so that, that could technically be sorted out. I mean, so let's say, you know, June 30th comes and goes. We're still reconciling at that point, really, with the town. Yeah, okay. Um, all right, so we have a motion and a second. Uh, I'm gonna, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'm gonna do the roll call. Um, Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Bakayaki?
Yes.
Ms. Rossi?
Yeah.
Uh, myself, yes. On, uh, anything else under your report, Dr. Shaverhood?
No, thank you.
Sure. Um, report of the school committee, anybody? So, um, Dr. Shaverhood, it's, it's okay at this time to, to, that's what I wanted to discuss, right?
Unfortunately, Mr. Flaherty, it is.
Okay. Yeah, so, um, come to find out only the other day that, uh, Ms. Ruiz will, will be leaving us. She will be retiring. I don't, after how many, how many years of service?
Forty years and six months.
Forty years and six months. Amazing, amazing, and, and, and she's, she's just been there, you know, she's always, she's, I was trying to think of something to say, and she's just always been the one who's been there. And I remember, I remember back when, when Dr. Rabinevich had, had stepped down and, and, and Dr. Shaverhood had come on board. And, and at that time, we, we were losing, you know, the, the prior superintendent. We lost, um, the, the business manager at the time, Ms. Miranda. We lost, um, the curriculum director, Ms. Rotella. And there was, there was really like no continuity there, except for Ms. Ruiz. She'd been, she'd been the one that, that, that knew everything and, and, and be the, the institutional knowledge. Thank God, you know? But, um, but, but just, I'm gonna, it's gonna be sad to, to see you go, so sad. Um, so, well. Yeah, so enjoy, enjoy your retirement. Um, anyone else have anything to say for Ms. Ruiz? See, it's, it's news to everyone else except for, um, Ms. Bakayaki. We got a heads up as being on the budget committee. So, so I wanted, we had to keep it private, so you, I know you guys are hearing this for the first time, Ms. Rossi and Ms. Morgan. So go ahead, Ms. Rossi.
Uh, I just wanted to thank you, Michelle. You've been unbelievably helpful, especially in my first year as, um, a school committee, uh, member. Um, I can't even imagine the amount of work that I, that you do behind the scenes, let alone what I see. Um, and after 40 years to the town, that's unbelievable. I was just actually singing your praises. I recently met a relative of yours, and we were talking about how wonderful you are. So I wish you all the best and, and whatever you decide to do in your retirement, and thank you for everything.
You, you're welcome.
Uh, Ms. Bakayaki?
I, I just want to say thank you, Michelle, for everything. Um, it's not very often you hear someone who dedicates their whole career to, to one place. So I just want to say thank you for that and congratulations, and your family must be so happy to be about to have your undivided attention. I hope you enjoy it. We will definitely miss you. Thank you for everything.
You're welcome.
And Ms. Morgan?
So I just want to say thank you, Michelle. I mean, I worked with you as well as being on the committee, and you have been awesome. And this is a well-deserved retirement for you, and I wish you the best.
Thank you very much. I will miss, I will miss everybody, but I think it's time.
I don't, I don't want to say goodbye. But, uh, as they were saying, it's such a well-deserved, um, retirement. You're gonna be missed, and, and your successor has some really big shoes to fill. Anyone else have any, um, most, um, school committee business? Uh, Ms. Bakayaki?
So this, the, the bright spot is the new elementary school, right? So I just want to mention that, that, um, you know, the beam ceremony is coming up on Wednesday. There are lots of people came out to sign the vinyl. When I was manning the table last week, a few retired educators came out. It was really great to see them and listen to them, talk to each other about when they work together at Minute Forest, so, um, that was really nice. And today I did get a chance to go on the website and check out the webcams, and it's amazing. If you haven't checked out the webcams, and then you can back it up and then watch the progress, like you watch the building going up. It's, I'm so glad that we have those cameras out there, it's really great.
Yeah, I agree. Uh, anyone else with, um, uh, school committee, uh, reports?
Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing.
Oh, go ahead, Ms. Bakayaki.
Okay, I'm sorry. Um, so we, all through this whole thing, we've talked a lot about how we appreciate the teachers and, and everything that they've done to get us through this since March, right? Um, but I did want to mention also how, how hard the superintendent and the assistant superintendent have been working. So I was thinking about the budget and how hard they've both worked on that in the absence of a business manager. Um, and we really, it was a tough budget cycle back in December. We got through it, and then I feel like we had to do it again, like it was another whole budget cycle. Um, and, you know, and, and they worked through that, worked through the current budget, and it, it's just been a lot this year, and I just want to say that, you know, I appreciate that, that extra work that you had to, that you had to do.
Thank you.
So thank you both.
Yeah, and, and with all of my requests and, you know, questions and, you know, add this column, and can we get this, and can we get that? And I, it, it doesn't go unnoticed, I, I very much appreciate it too. It's, 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 it's tough. It's, it's, it's so tough, you know, and, and still moving forward academically at the same time. It, it, it's, it's great.
Well, right, they've taken on this full, this other full-time job, which really has turned into, you know, even more this year.
And, and, and now, I mean, now you're gonna be down a, a, a secretary, you know? So you have to refill those shoes fast. Boy. Um, oh, I just, I just wanted to, to point out just this chair. So this is the, the end of the, um, our last meeting for this term. And by now, actually, months and months ago, back in April, we should've had, uh, an election with a new school committee member, but that didn't happen. And that's gonna happen, what, on the 23rd, right, Ms. Bakayaki?
Tuesday, yep.
Yeah, yeah, so, so I, when is our next scheduled meeting? Probably not till August? Yeah, we're gonna have to schedule a meeting shortly after the election just to have, um, you know, the, the elected officer vote, people need to vote, the chair, vice chair, and the second, you know, clerk, uh, for the school committee. And that, that just, it wouldn't be right for me to just, you know, sit there till August. I mean, whoever, whoever's gonna be in that position, um, really needs to, it needs to happen quickly after, after the election. And, uh, so whoever is in that position can work with the superintendent and the, and the assistant superintendent and, and move forward and what have you. Just, just, so, so just expect, be there to be a, a meeting with probably one agenda item just to, you know, um, elect officers at some point.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, any, anyone else have any other business? Uh, seeing none, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
That would be Ms. Rossi, second?
Second.
Ms. Morgan, okay. Uh, roll call, uh, Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Bakayaki?
Yes.
Ms. Rossi?
Yeah.
Myself, yes, and we are adjourned, and thank you, Mr. Ruiz, as always, um, for getting it together. It was tough tonight, but you did it. And, um, uh, this is, it feels so sad, it's like the, this last time I'm gonna see Michelle, it seems.
I'm, I'm in town, I'll see you.
That's right.
I'll see your gaming games next year. So, okay, bye-bye.
Thank you.